Meeting to order on Monday, March 19th, 2018. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Kerrick Butler of the Faith Christian Center at 3831 Tremont Point Parkway in Ossale. Who come forward at this time, give our invocation, lead us into place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you because you are good and your mercy endures forever. You told us in your word to seek the prosperity and the peace of the place where we dwell. So we seek the peace and prosperity of Smyrna. We ask that you give the leaders wisdom and understanding that they'll do what is best for the city, that this city may experience greater days than it's ever experienced before. We thank you for each and every family here. We pray that they prosper and are in health even as their soul prospers. We receive these things and we thank you for them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a special thanks to Pastor Butler. He is, his church has moved just right outside the city, but we thank you for all your involvement with the public safety and all that you've done for our community. Thank you very much. Agenda changes. I don't know that we have any mayor report. I know that we've got some, have an election coming up, May the 22nd. If there's anyone here that's running for any public office that would like to, at this time, make a brief comment, you're welcome to come up now and for any position.
Hello Mayor Bacon and the rest of the council and everyone in the room. I'm looking forward to hearing the rest of the meeting and seeing what everyone here is concerned about. My name is Taryn Bowman and I am running for State House District 40. I have been running my campaign for the last couple of months and there are two more months to go that you vote on May 22nd. I am running to take Rich Golick's seat, who's been your representative for 20 years now, and he's retiring. So I'm excited about that. Oh, I guess you can see me on the screen up here. I keep looking back. But I have been knocking on doors, meeting neighbors, already really entrenched solving problems and loving hearing everyone's issues and really trying to help and figure out how we can resolve some of those. I have been involved in the community for years now. Before my opponent was even born, I was volunteering at the Shepherd Spinal Center, winning awards there. And I am excited about continuing the service that I've been doing in the community in the State House. And my, I know I gave some of you guys my cards, my numbers on there. That's my cellphone. I am very community oriented and I'm very accessible and keep that. So when I'm in the house, you can call me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? While the next person's coming down, I just want to mention briefly, we've, looks like there's nobody up here because we're short some folks. Ms. Wilkinson and Ms. Bluestein are out of town and we, of course, we've got a vacancy. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Brant Suddeth. I am running for City Council for the Ward 6 opening. Excited to be a part of this organization. My wife and I have lived in Smyrna now for 15 years. We have three boys. I work around the corner at Home Depot, been with them for 12 years. My involvement in the community, I sit on the Covenant Christian School Board here, which is just, you know, half a mile away from here. I also have coached at Little League, at Smyrna Little League and coached basketball here in our community for the last 10 years and have been my HOA president for 10 years. Can't find anyone to take that role from me. But no, I enjoy serving my fellow citizens and the race, my race is, we're off and running and excited about the opportunity. So look forward to hearing from folks. You can reach out to me at brantforsmyrna.com.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Anyone else running for any office? Okay. We'll get into the agenda. Item 4 is land issues, zonings and annexation, item May 2018-122. Public hearing approval of extended work hours for blastoff construction for the pouring of concrete foundation, 1.9 acre land lot, 621 4390 South Cobb Drive, blastoff construction. Is the applicant here by any chance? Okay. Ms. Jones, will you give us the background, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Blastoff Construction Incorporated is requesting an extension of normal work hours for the pouring of the concrete foundation for the Legacy Academy Building. The request is to extend work hours for three hours on one day during the week of March 19th through 23rd. The proposed work hours would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The proposed building is 12,000 square feet in floor area. The amount of work needed to complete these pours generally exceeds the work hours of a normal working day under the city's ordinance. Community development is supportive of the request and recommends approval of the extended work hours.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this request for pouring on extended hours? Okay, the applicant, would you please step forward? Let the record show there was no opposition or anyone that wanted to make comments. This is Mr. Finlay. Jeffrey, do we need to swear him in? Okay. Mr. Ron Finlay, this is in your district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. You want to state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is James Carr.
And you are with?
I am with Blastoff Construction. I'm the site supervisor.
Site supervisor, okay. So pending weather, you have a week that you've charted where you're going to make this pour work, right?
Well, thanks to the wonderful weather, it's most likely going to be one week later. It's going to be not this week, but next week.
Okay. Is that properly reflected in the paper here?
This was just in discussing with our contractor this morning. He, that's what his recommendation is. It would be early next week.
Okay. Are we good with that? Okay. I hope you found doing business with Smyrna has been pleasant and that you continue to find work and support here in the community.
We have and we're looking forward to it.
Good. Spend money. We appreciate it.
There you go.
Buy the guys lunch sometimes. Appreciate that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think we can, have we closed the public hearing?
Yeah.
If the public hearing is closed, did you have any questions of us?
None whatsoever.
All right. Well, thank you for doing business with us and we'll proceed to approve this and give you a chance to put the gas back to work.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item number 2018-122. Actually... It's in the form of a public hearing. We do that, Jeffrey, is that good? Okay, approval of extended work hours for blastoff construction for the pouring of concrete foundation, 1.9 acres land lot, 621 4390 South Cobb Drive, Blastoff Construction, Inc.
Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to 0. Item 4B, under land issues, zonings and annexations, 2018-119, public hearing only, plat approval for 990 Pebblebrook Road, 1.0245 acres, land lot 566, 990 Pebblebrook Road. Applicant is John Hicks. The background, Ms. Jones, please.
John Hicks is requesting approval to subdivide his property at 990 Pebblebrook Road into two single-family residential lots. The subject property is 1.0245 acres in size and is zoned R20 single-family residential. The applicant plans to subdivide the property into, within the requirements of the current R20 zoning district, so no rezoning is required. Community development has reviewed the proposed subdivision against the requirements of the R20 zoning district. Community development recommends approval of the requested subdivision and Rusty Martin, our senior planner, will be giving more background on this agenda item.
Is Mr. Hicks here by any chance? John Hicks, okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this plat approval for this location? Let the record show there is none. This is also in Mr. Finlay's district. Mr. Finlay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a three-step process. I know Mr. Martin wants to give us some details on this. You want to do that upfront and then we can walk through the approvals because this is a public hearing only for information purposes and then we'll have two votes to...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This request went before the planning and zoning board last week, or last Monday. On March 12th, they recommended approval of the plat by a vote of 6 to 0. Mr. Hicks is requesting to annex the subject property that's reflected up on the screen, 990 Pebblebrook Road, and then subdivide it into two lots. The property is requesting to be annexed as R20 into Smyrna R20. The proposed lots will meet the requirements of the R20 zoning district and community development recommends approval of this plat. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? If not, I'll ask it to Mr. John Hicks if you want to step forward, just in case we have any questions. Perfect. Don't mess this up. And we're glad that you're annexing this property into the city, so.
Okay.
Guess you're going to build a couple of houses there, right?
Two very nice houses.
A good deal. Any questions? Okay. You can sit down now. You did, you did good. So I guess we can, we can disclose that portion of the, if there's no other questions, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and then we'll move on down to C 2018-127. Approval of ordinance 2018-03, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tracks of land lying and being in land lot 466, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, total of 0.92 acre tract, being known as 990 Pebblebrook Road, Mableton, Georgia, effective April the 1st, 2018. Mr. Finlay.
I couldn't have done it better myself, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. As Mr. Martin indicated, we have a three-step process. One, we just concluded the public hearing. This one is the approval of an ordinance for the annexation request and we'll follow that immediately with another action. So, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2018-127, approval of ordinance 2018-03, annexation request with 100% of the owners requesting annexation on all tracks lying and being in land lot 466, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, total of .92 acre tract, being known as 990 Pebblebrook. Actually, one he's annexed in, it'll say Smyrna, Georgia, 30126, effective April 1st, 2018, into Ward 7, Smyrna.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to 0. Thank you very much. Item D, 2018-128, the final vote, plat approval for 990 Pebblebrook Road, 1.0245 acres, land lot 466, 990 Pebblebrook Road. John Hicks is the applicant. Mr. Finlay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2018-128, which is the final vote, plat approval for 990 Pebblebrook Road, 1.0245 acres, land lot 466, 990 Pebblebrook Road. Mr. John Hicks, applicant.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to 0.
Hard work tonight, John.
Item 4E, 2018-118, it's a public hearing, plat approval with variances for 1102 Church Street, variance request V 18-020, 0.810 acres, land lot 487, 1102 Church Street. Brad Thompson's the applicant. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Brad Thompson is requesting approval to divide an existing vacant lot into two residential lots at 1102 Church Street. The subject property is 0.81 acres in size and is zoned R15 single-family residential. The subject property is currently comprised of one lot of record fronting on Church Street. In 1913, the same property was platted as two lots within the Reed and Walker subdivision. The applicant wishes to revert back to the two lot configuration. Community development has reviewed the proposed reconfiguration and replating against the requirements of the R15 zoning district. Community development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replating.
I know, I see the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this plat approval with variances? Okay. Let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Marilyn Blackburn's district. Ms. Blackburn.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Thompson.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing what?
Good. Okay. So you want to tell us a little bit about you and why you've decided to divide this lot into two?
Yeah. Well, I've been a builder developer here in Smyrna since, before my memory started to leave me, but it's been back since the 90s and I've been around. Some of you all have known me for quite a while and I want to divide this lot so that I can put something on it that is more affordable. As you all know, Smyrna is, pricing in Smyrna is skyrocketing and so all I want to do is go back to what was originally platted and put a couple of more affordable homes. I won't say entry level by any means, but certainly more affordable than it would be if it was the one lot that it exists as today. Now, I also feel like it currently does comply. I mean, there's, there's 40,000 square feet, so it does comport with R15 zoning and I don't want to build one house behind another. I'd certainly would rather have two up on the street. And the one request that I have, or one of the variances I've requested is a side setback variance. And what that variance will allow me to do is to put a little bit more, a little wider product on it, a little bit more attractive. It'll be more aesthetically pleasing from the street. Under the current R15 guidelines, you would be, you'd have 10-foot side setbacks, which would restrict my product to about 30 feet. What, what I'm asking will give, allow me to do about a 35-foot wide product. And if you have a garage on the front and you're looking at the front of a house and if you've got 30 feet under the old guidelines and a 20-foot wide garage, it's not real attractive. Plenty of it's done and it, and it does work, but it's just not as attractive. So that's, that's the reason for the request on the side setback variance.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone?
Can I arrest it? Y'all have comments to y'all?
I did have a presentation with y'all to nail everything that we discussed. I can go through it real quick or we can move on?
That's fine.
All right. Just real quick, the planning and zoning board did hear this case last Monday. They made a recommendation for approval of 6 to 0. Just to show you the location, this is 1102 Church Street. It's on the south side of Church Street, just before you get to the Glen Rose subdivision to the west. It's currently a vacant site. There are no improvements to the site and the current zoning is R15. As Mr. Thompson said, with this request, there is no zoning change. It'll remain R15 and the two lots will exceed a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. As stated before, the, the lots were originally plotted in 1913. They had 50-foot widths and about 350-foot depth. With this reconfiguration, Mr. Thompson is requesting to reduce the lot width for the property for each lot from 85 feet down to 50 feet and reduce the side setbacks from 10 feet down to five. And staff is supportive of both those variances. Just to give you an idea, here's the subdivision plat from 1913, just so you can see it was recorded. And then this is the proposed site plan that Mr. Thompson is proposing. So you've got two 50-foot lot widths and then you're 353 feet of lot depth. And the minimum setbacks that he's requesting with this is a front setback of 35 feet, which is the same as R15 zoning district, a side setback of five feet, which is a reduction of five feet in R15 zoning district, and then a rear setback of 30, which is the minimum requirement for the R15 zoning district. These are the homes and the architectures proposing to build on site. And then just to give you an idea of what it looks like today and then some adjoining properties. Community development is supportive of the plat approval with the requested variances.
Any questions to Mr. Martin? Okay, Ms. Blackburn.
Okay, Mayor. I move to approve item number 2018-118, plat approval with variances for 1102 Church Street, variance request V 18-020, 0.810 acres, land lot 487 at 1102 Church Street.
Second. And motion is second to approve this plat approval with variances, 1102 Church. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to 0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brad. Brad's built a lot of quality houses in Smyrna. We appreciate what you've done for our city. Item 6, former business A, 2018-126, approval for purchase of a police administration vehicle in the amount of $25,553 from the FY18 operating funds purchased from Wade Ford located at 3860 South Cobb Drive, 30080. Mr. Norton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty straightforward. This is a vehicle needed by the police department. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item 6A, 2018-126, approval of purchase of a police admin vehicle in the amount of $25,553 from the fiscal year 18, operating funds purchased from Wade Ford located at 3860 South Cobb Drive in Smyrna.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 4 to 0. Item 6, A, 2018-70, approval of the use FY17 surplus. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Fiscal year 2017 ended with stronger revenues and lower expenditures than anticipated. The general fund surplus per the audited financial statements is $2,713,545. So the city has a positive year-end position. Our finance department recommends allocating some of the surplus to cover three project costs that were not budgeted. Those three projects total $1,570,519. Staff recommends approval of the suggested use of surplus funds.
Mr. Finlay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is rare to have a surplus in government these days. We do have an opportunity this year to allocate those resources that were as a result of the increased appraisal by Cobb County. And so this additional amount for three projects, I move approval of the, approval of the use of the FY17 surplus as described.
Second.
I have motion second. You mentioned one of those is the big ticket item. I know it's for the, for the roof at the community center.
We have talked about the repair of the roof at the community center and we have done what can, what we can repair-wise. It's time to replace the facility. That dollar amount is 1.2 roughly million dollars. It's been 25 years that roof's been in place, so the opportunity is, is customary along the way, you're going to have to replace systems and operations and roofs are among those. So I think this is an exciting moment. Go ahead and fix that in, out of the surplus. I'll move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to... Is that the right one that we voted on? You didn't put, yeah, that should be item B, shouldn't it? Okay. All right, that's, that's approved 4 to 0. Seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the March 5th, 2018, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the pre-council meeting minutes. And item C, approval of the March 1st, 2018, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda. Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4 to 0. Item nine is committee report. We'll start tonight, Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to say thank you to some of my ward three residents that I see out there at our city council meeting. Thank you for being here. As I always share on my Facebook post or my other social media networks, we encourage, I encourage you to come out and join us here at the city council so that you can see what we're doing and be a part of our community as well. And also Pastor Butler has left, but I, last Sunday, had the opportunity of going to the ribbon cutting of their new church that, it's in Ossale now, but they will be sorely missed. They were close to my home and that's where I would go and I didn't want to go downtown to church. So, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out on Saturday to our St. Patrick's Day festivities as a good Irishman. Appreciate you supporting our downtown businesses because if you don't support them, they won't stay. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Ron Finlay.
Mr. Mayor, I have no formal report from Finance Administration, but I want to applaud the team as the department heads are putting together their FY19 and the senior staff for trying to manage the mini balls in the air at the same time. So thank you for the team for doing that. We have community relations. The team is doing a great job and although the planning and zoning board has a couple of items that they've held in abeyance, we'll probably see some of those get released pretty soon. We still have some big items that we're going to be discussing and during the public input process, we certainly seek the public's involvement as these projects go forward and we'll be wrestling with those. Community relations, we have some opportunities there in the months ahead to show our brand a little bit better. We have some exciting things coming, maybe an event addition to the inventory for a performing stage. So those items are coming. I just wanted to let people know that those are in process. Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Jones, anything else? Mr. Andrews.
No reports, sir.
Jeffrey Tucker, who's filling in for Scott Cochran, who's on another vacation.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Graham. Anything? Thank you. We do not have a show calls here and we've got a couple of folks signed up for citizens' input. Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments is his topic. input. Alec Bakri, thirty-four fifty-nine, Shawnee Trail. Comments is his topic.
Going into this, going into this, uh, Windy Hill project, we never had a referendum. And, uh, again, with Broner for twenty-three million, we had a referendum, but not for forty-two million. And we should have had it, and if it passed, then we could have had a city town hall meeting to answer any questions. That's never happened. The projects have already started and, uh, the utility bill, a flyer could have been put in that for this April seventeenth meeting that we've just heard about this past weekend on the Windy Hill project. Nothing in the utility bill. That could have gone out to seventeen thousand homes. So that's another missed opportunity involving the people being aware of this meeting at Windy Hill. Also, I just cannot understand why the city has now, after the fact that it started having this city meeting next month, the April seventeenth at the community center, how you're going to promote it. At this point, we, uh, have had no input into this project with our splash money. Saturday night, we looked up on the Smyrna website to see when I heard there's something going on in April, did not show the April seventeenth. We did a, a tweeter and that showed the time and place, time and, uh, date, but the place was incorrect. So it hasn't even been put as of Saturday night on the Smyrna website for those can look it up to attend. This is all done before the horse, and I find it absolutely poor communications that this has not been done before with the citizens' money to be done before the project even started. I find this outrageous and pathetic, and some of the people in the city should take a course in communications. And because it's lacking on a forty-two million dollar project to not have the citizens have any input up to this point, and the meeting the seventeenth of April is like Concord Road. It's going to be after the fact, and I still understand that the council still hasn't agreed on the final design. Outrageous. This has been handled poorly and I find it pathetic. Thank you.
Monica Delancey, thirteen twenty-five Six Flags Drive, number nine oh one Austell Housing?
Yes. Good evening. Um, thank you. I'm here to talk about the housing crisis that is a crisis not only nationwide, but here in Cobb County and how it's affecting, um, and impacting our children. Now, let me just explain to you how it's impacting our children. Believe it or not, Smyrna has Title I schools. In order to be classified as a Title I school, you have to have at least fifty-five of your, percentage of your children enrolled that receive free or reduced lunch. And the means test that's used to determine whether or not a child received free or reduced lunch means that the household, for example, a household of three, has to make less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year to qualify for free or reduced lunch. Okay? So in theory, if that household is making less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, the take-home pay is about sixteen hundred dollars a month after taxes and insurance. So if that family is renting an apartment, the average amount that a family pays for a two-bedroom apartment here in Cobb County, preferably on the south side of Cobb County, it's about eight hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom, give or take, maybe a little bit more in Smyrna, a little less if you find a mom-and-pop type envi- um, situation. So if that household is paying eight hundred dollars a month in rent, basically their take-home pay is about sixteen hundred dollars a month, um, that leaves nothing for, um, groceries, clothes for the kid, children, um, um, a car note, car insurance, whatever it is. Um, and so you ask yourself, well, who's making twenty-five thousand dollars a year? Well, those are your support-level workers. Those are your entry-level workers that work at, work at your biggest hospital here in Cobb County. That's your entry-level workers, whether apparel pro, a secretary, a janitor, that work at, with your, with your school system here in Cobb County. That's your retail workers. That's your customer service workers. So that's who's making about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So we have to ask ourselves, do we have housing here in Cobb County that, that can be in, um, for those, for those workers? Okay? Um, so if they can't afford to pay rent where they live, they're facing eviction. And that's when you start hearing a lot of our schools are transient. The average amount of time that a family resides in a apartment complex, um, and I'm saying apartment complex because they're swift to do evictions, is about eighteen months. That means we have about three hundred families a year going in and out of our, our schools, especially here in the south side town. So what I do, we thrive in Riverside Renters Association. I empower renters. Um, I help renters navigate, um, find the resources. Um, I, I let them be, know that there are the biggest voice, especially in Austell, where you have fifty-one percent of the households. There's our renters. So thank you for your time as wanting to share that tonight.
Al Graves, ten seventy-nine Pinehurst Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. Water bills is topic.
My name is Al Graves. I reside at ten seventy-nine Pinehurst Drive Southeast. I don't know if, uh, most of y'all remember this, but several weeks ago, I made an appearance up here doing citizens' input in response to some complaints from citizens of Smyrna that there were disparity in the water bills in the city. And then along with that, they indicated that apparently they were some citizens of Smyrna that were on the Cobb County water system. So I kept hearing things back and forth and back and forth and various numbers, and to cut to the chase, I thought, uh, I was running up against the blank walls, so I filed a Freedom of Information request. And through the help of staff, Ms. Terry, she established through the water department that through some quirk of annexation, I'm guessing during the contiguous territory of Smyrna that was annexed several years ago, the decision was made, I'm assuming, now this is all assumption, I, uh, that the records are not that clear about it, but the decision was made to leave those citizens who were annexed into the city in that process on the Cobb County Water Department, at least the water portion of it. And so then the report came back and we're talking about eight hundred accounts or people that were impacted by this. And so I set about to try to see if there was any disparity on the rate differences between the city and the county on that, and they reported to me that there's seventeen thousand customers on the, uh, Smyrna City Water Department, and we're talking about eight hundred here. So with a lot of help from staff, I started stabbing here and y'all are trying to find out, and I couldn't establish anything. So I finally decided that maybe if I use my bill as a prototype and they could get some information from the county, we could establish some kind of criteria about what was going on. Cause to me, it was a dilemma having this situation as it was. So, uh, they sent it through. The finance department was able to find a fax sheet from the county, and I don't want to beat this to death, but let me say this, that according to the figures, there's a disparity of about fifteen dollars on my bill on what Smyrna charges me and what the people on the county water system pay. And I know this is not a major number of accounts we're talking about, but it is not morally right to me for the city to have two different rates of water regardless of what the circumstances are if they're citizens in the same county. And so according to the figure that I came up with is that roughly for, uh, I'm rounding it off to fifteen dollars for sake of argument. And so based on that, on a yearly basis, we're looking at probably a hundred and seventy-one dollars that these people are not paying, that the seventeen thousand are paying. And, uh, I don't know of a solution that I personally can do it. So I'm going to be real generous and give it back to the city of Smyrna mayor and council because I think it is a moral issue and believe me, I could use the fifteen dollars off of my bill if it came to that. I don't know how you accomplish this and so forth, but I, just representative, I think my bill was, uh, for the water portion only on the use of two thousand gallons was, uh, thirty-seven dollars. The equivalent county bill was twenty-three dollars. So that's how, where that comes about. And it was not apparent on any information I could find on whether or not the county customers pay the storm water that we do. In that case, it would be seventeen dollars.
And, and Ms. Graves, you've gone over almost three minutes though. Thank you for your comment.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll quit.
Thank you. Thank you.
But anyway, I return the problem to y'all and I hope I see a solution in print. Thank you.
Richard Pellegrino, seventeen ten Cumberland Point Boulevard, Mary George Order three double oh six seven. His topic is police.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. I'm here to, um, memorialize the third anniversary of the tragic execution of Nick Thomas by Smyrna Police Department. That case is being adjudicated right now in federal court and hopefully justice will be, uh, completed there since our own district attorney and courts were too cowardly to deal with it. But what I will do is move on to what has happened since then because even though it was a travesty and a tragedy, mistakes are made, but life is about what we do to prevent those mistakes from happening again or from committing them again. And I'm sorry to say that in the subsequent couple of years, there's been a series of similar incidents which had happier endings but could have ended up in, with the same tragic and murder of an unarmed young black man. Both of these cases are still open and being investigated and may end up in court. Hopefully, they won't have to be adjudicated there and they can be handled here in Smyrna. One is a young black man driving to work on Windy Hill, six in the morning, is tailed by Smyrna police, drives the speed limit and is pulled over at, when he gets in Cobb County. So Cobb County police are called by Smyrna police. But this is after the Smyrna police officer came out with her gun unholstered for a traffic stop to a young African-American man who committed no crime except driving while black. Cobb police determined there was no infraction and after, you know, half an hour of going back and forth, sent him on his way to work. Okay? And, uh, without even a warning because he, he didn't do anything. So we have police officers on the force who are apparently afraid of young black males and to the point that they will unholster their gun and threaten somebody who's doing no wrong. Secondly, and I'll be quick, by the way, he filed a complaint. It's still ongoing, and he was visited at his work by Smyrna police to investigate that, unannounced. Now, that sounds like intimidation to me. Second case is a popular entertainment establish, right, establishment here in Smyrna that serves predominantly young and African-American population, was raided by Smyrna police, again, for no reason. There was no crimes committed, no fights, and the lieutenant pulled his gun out and pointed it at the manager, African-American young man, at his head. Okay? Because he didn't like how this young man was handling the crowd there. This again is open, being investigated. Uh, you know, attorneys are involved. Hopefully, the police department will be involved and that lieutenant will be disciplined. So we have two cases of Cobb police officers gone wild. Both cases of a white officer interacting with a young black unarmed male. We've got a problem. Thank you.
That's the final speaker for tonight. If there's no other business to be brought forward this body, I declare this meeting adjourned. It's like seven forty-six.